Okay, good evening. It's 6:00 and welcome to the September 10th meeting of the governing body. Call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilman Kell, who will provide the invocation, stand as you are able, and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tomorrow, we honor and remember those lost on the 9/11 attacks. But those lost in the aftermath of the War on Terror... Excuse me. You may not have been personally affected by the loss of the tax, but almost everyone has been affected by the War on Terror. Let's take a moment of silence to honor and remember those lost on the 9/11/2001 and those lost in the following military actions.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Okay, move on to appointments. Madam Clerk.
A is award appointment recommending the appointment of Alicia Morales to the Civil Service Commission to fill a term ending September 10, 2028. B is an advisory council appointment of Michael Byington to the City of Topeka Americans with Disability Act, ADA Advisory Council, for a term ending September 13, 2026.
Okay, you've heard the appointments as announced. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akala. Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
And Hiller.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. Now, I believe Alicia Morales and... I'm trying to find the gentleman's... Oh, Michael Byington, were going to be present this evening? Did they show up? Well, even in their absence, if they're not here, I'd like to give a round of applause for them taking the position. Alicia, was that you there at the last... Popped up?
I'm here.
Okay, good. Yeah. Usually we ask you to stand, but we still recognize you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Move on now to Agenda Item Number Three, Presentations. Madam Clerk.
Presentation on the Gage Park Improvement Authority 2023 Annual Update.
Good evening, everyone. I had the distinct pleasure yesterday of attending a groundbreaking. The expansion of the Kansas Children's Discovery Center happened. It was a community celebration, a celebration that will affect the lives of children within our community for years to come. That groundbreaking is just a small slice of the vision that is being formed right now in Gage Park, one of the gems of our community. I'm Keith Warda. I'm a board member of the Gage Park Improvement Authority. With me tonight, I have Jim Martin, who's Chair of the Board, and Tammy Cortez, who is Treasurer Secretary. We represent the Gage Park Improvement Authority, and we are here tonight to give you an update on what's happening in Gage Park and where we hope to see things go. Gage Park Improvement Authority is... Well, our sole purpose is to do things that improve the park itself. And the three entities that are in the park, the Kansas Children's Discovery Center, as well as the Zoo, and Parks and Rec are the primary beneficiaries of the Gage Park Improvement Authority. For those of you that aren't familiar with what happened in November of 2022, at that time, the county citizens voted for a two-tenths-of-a-cent tax. That would be a sales tax that would be gathered and focused on Gage Park. At that same time, the Gage Park Improvement Authority was established to monitor and administer those funds. You can see that the Department of Revenue collects and administers the sales tax. A couple of things you may not know is that the sales tax, the additional sales tax, does not count towards the county's sales tax authority. And also uniquely, the sales tax remains in effect until it's repealed in the same manner that it was established by a resolution of the County Commission and a vote of the taxpayers or the voters of Shawnee County. Basically, our charge is improvements in the park, whether that be construction, whether that be equipment, whether that be operations, whatever the case may be. There are also provisions for community outreach relative to the park, children's educational programming relative to the park. Anything that really goes to the improvement of the park is what we're most interested in. You have in your packet the 2023 annual report. There are financial disclosures in that report. The pie chart that you see on the screen right now really reflects current financial information. That's through August of this year, represents one year and eight months of revenue that has been collected for the benefit of the park. You can see that nearly $7.5 million, over $7.5 million, has gone to the Zoo, nearly $3 million to Parks and Rec in Gage Park, almost $2 million to the Discovery Center. And then by legislation, there is 5% of the sales tax that is gathered that is at the discretion of the Gage Park Improvement Authority. We are to use those additional funds for the benefit of the entities within the park as well as improvement in the park itself. Final slide that I have is really an update on what's going on. Certainly, I just mentioned the expansion of the Discovery Center. The Discovery Center has not only been working on that, but is also working on newer and larger exhibits that they've had over this past year. Parks and Rec has been busy helping with the master plan and helping develop the master plan, the roadmap for the Gage Park going into the future. They are also under design with Playland, the playground area across from the Zoo associated with the depot there. There are plans in play right now relative to moving the depot to an area that would be safer for pedestrian crossings. Those things are all happening right now with Parks and Rec. And the Zoo itself is focused on their existing facilities as well as improvements and the next phase relative to the Zoo. So with that, I'd stand for any questions you might have. I'd also ask Jim and Tammy if they might need to help answer some of the questions.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Anyone for the governing body? Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back a slide? Because it's not... We don't have the color version on our pie chart, and I was a little confused as to why... So what is the yellow?
That's the Gage Park Improvement Authority funds that we have discretion over. 5% by legislation, 5% of the sales tax that's collected is administered by the authority.
Right. I was just confused because there's two numbers.
Right.
For the Zoo in there as opposed to one. So here's my question as to that. I guess what is that... My first question is, what is that currently being spent on, and what are the conversations about its possible future use?
I might make a comment on that. Jim Martin, current Chair, one of the very first things we did was commit to a dollar match with Parks and Rec of up to $100,000 each to facilitate the assessment work that's ongoing. So we've actually, as out of that 5%, we're actually helping fund that study in companionship. The other more recent thing we've just done is also provide $50,000 to the library free and reduced fee admission for the Discovery Center and the Zoo. So we've done those things immediately. The other thing that we're trying to do is put things... Steps in place to where we've had historically the three entities out there. We want the authority to be proactive enough to be cooperative with the other entities to where we can take steps. We're talking about any number of things possible, looking at new signage, new wayfaring. We're possibly looking at the existing Gage Arch that's up near Sixth Street. The important thing I want to stress is that any of these improvements that we're looking at or even talking about, the character and the history of Gage Park is extremely important. And that's one of the things when Keith mentioned the railroad and combining railroad and carousel area, we're also talking about a historic presence in that building, you know, for what you... Whether you call it a history room or legacy room or whatever. But the character of the park and the history of the park is number-one priority with respect to any of these discussions at this point. So we're starting to evolve into that process now to look at what we can do on an active basis.
Sure. All right, my next question is, and I don't have the Gage Park Master Plan in front of me, so I may be half-wrong. It's okay to tell me. But I believe in that plan, there is a clubhouse, I think it's Westlake, and I can't remember its name, in front of the amphitheater. And I believe on that master plan, I believe it and the Big Gage Clubhouse are probably the two largest facilities for public use out at the park. Under the... It seems to me under the master plan, there's the removal of Westlake. Long-term, it would be gone. And whether they know I'm supposed to say this or not, there's some discussion by the Zoo utilizing Big Gage more, a little less public access in the future. My concern is that there will not be a large clubhouse available for public use a few years down the road as we move towards that. And I'm wondering if anyone else has expressed that concern, or if that's been a discussion, or if there's any talks about making sure one large one remains open to the public?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Councilman, I assure you, yes and yes. Looking at the train station situation in the carousel... Carousel is seasonal. We've had discussions about making it year-round or availability year-round, but the discussion also has included the provision for a large shelter house or building attached to that complex to allow the Parks and Rec to conduct their summer camps and then also be available for public gatherings. So that is, as Keith said, that's... We're looking at that right now, the hard... How do we do that? And so in the next six months, you're going to see a number of things come out, I think, that are going to answer most of your questions. But yes, we are. We're thinking about that.
And my last question, which maybe, again, nobody wants me to ask, and I have not... I have no involvement with Civic Theater and haven't even had this conversation with them. I will tell you, and I've said this probably before, Helen Hawker is wonderful. I believe it has a place in the park long-term, and I think Civic Theater was a savior in keeping that program and what they do, not just on a regular basis, but especially for children and minors and high schoolers and that kind of thing. Having said that, as much as people love it, that building has problems. It's not in the most ideal spot if the Zoo wants to do some growth and development. So really, my bigger question is kind of two parts. Are there any conversations right now with them actively about the future of a Helen Hawker still in Gage Park? And the second piece of that is, is it possible to assist in that and ensure that it's a smooth transition, that there's been discussion of any of those funds in that fourth fund that could be used to help facilitate such a transition if we need to build something new or move them somewhere else?
Say a qualified yes. There have been discussions. In a master plan that you'll see coming out, you will see a potential change to be considered. And I think the situation with that, it needs a lot more development, but yes, it's active and under consideration. And again, in about three to four months here, up to six months, I think you're going to see and have a lot more discussion just about those particular items.
Great. No, I appreciate all those answers, and I'm glad they're at least in the discussion and not being ignored or forgotten or whatever it may be. So thank you.
I might just add, the last question you had about funds from the Improvement Authority that might be directed towards Helen Hawker or whatever the new configuration might look like. Right now, strategically, we're looking at kind of three buckets for that money. Now, it may change in the future. It's communications, overall communications on things that are happening in Gage Park for the benefit of the three entities there. Number two, safety, certainly we can all agree on that. Number three, the master plan efforts. So who knows going forward whether those priorities will change?
We do have a reserve fund already established.
Oh, that's good.
And the other thing we need to remember, too, is our discretionary funds, we get a very small slice of that. So things we do will be in partnership with some of the other entities or outside entities. And that's what we're looking toward on some of these bigger items, potential fund matching or activity by outside actors also, working on, you know, the larger ticket items.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Jim. How are you doing?
Good.
Jim was my boss, and we worked on Heartland Park, Topeka, years ago, years ago.
Don't remind me.
Has there been any discussion on the expansion of the train track? I know as the Zoo is expanding, I think it would just be awesome to show all of the park instead of some of the park.
More times than you can imagine. There's been a number of additional proposed routes. The problem with that is that train track is extremely expensive to do, but there has been some interest, a little bit, from some folks in the Zoo. Again, I think when we put the first master plan activities out, you're going to see a lot of this discussion. And yes, that has been considered, and there's a lot of obstacles, but there's a lot of positives. So we'll just see how... Let it go. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you. So being Chair, I look for you to keep that in the back of your mind then for me.
Keith will tell you, my idea of the authority is that it should be an active player with the other three entities. We don't have a lot of the money, but we can sure generate some ideas and activities. So we feel it's very important for us as a board to be, you know, very active.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you being here. I was asking a little more in the weeds about like events. So the other day, we had the food truck festival out there. It's a big hit. The city really loves the festival. But there was a lot of people who didn't go to your festival this year because, A, you can't control the heat, but the shade portion of it. Is there something that's in the works that we're talking about for some of these bigger events that happen at the Gage Park so that we continue to bring the community out for it?
Yes. Excuse me.
I think that's all in play. That's part of the master planning efforts that we're doing right now. And certainly, feedback and input like that is important as we go forward with that master plan.
Specifically, there is a portion of it that is considered a pedestrian thoroughfare mall to where vehicles would be eliminated in, but there would still be space for potentially, you know, a food truck array or some other type of activities.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Hofer.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I don't know how soon you are going to present or be ready to present the master plan again, but will it be presented to the council for one and to another time like we had the presentation at Big Gage Shelter House?
Yes, that's the intent there. We're looking at the next phase. Right now, it's been information gathering. The next phase there will be an additional public gathering like we had, and some of these things that we're talking about will be a little more fleshed out at that point. We got very good results and very good input from the first one, and so we will be doing that. And then eventually, more information will be presented to each governing body for, you know, further review down the way. That's probably going to be toward the end of the year, though.
I'm planning on making it to one of the authority meetings sometime in the near future, too, so I can hear what's going on.
Come on out. We'll give you a free ride on the carousel.
Don't go late.
Thank you both for the presentation and for the answers and the update.
Thank you.
I think you've done a great job, and like you, Keith, I was out there for the expansion at the Discovery Center, and that's really exciting to see that going on. It is really making that even more of a destination point for Topeka. Thank you for all your work. Tammy as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A is approval of a workers' compensation claim settlement in the amount of $50,000 to resolve the claim with Chris Sanders on a full and final basis for a work-related injury sustained by an employee while engaged in normal work duties. B and C are ordinances introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of June 1 through July 26 and enumerating said expenditures therein. D are minutes of the regular meeting of September 3, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay, you've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilman Kell.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala. All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, motion's carried. We move on to Action Item 5A. Madam Clerk.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, providing notice that the city is considering establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district, RHID, for the Riverstone Myers Place subdivision, RHID, and adopting a plan for the development of housing and public facilities in the proposed RHID and establishing the date and time of a public hearing.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Rhiannon Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services, will lead us through this item.
Good evening. So simply here tonight with the request of setting a public hearing for October 15th, this is for the Riverstone, otherwise known as Myers Place subdivision, RHID, that came before you a few meetings ago, for approval of the district. So we are now at the place to set that. This will set it for October 15th, where you will see a finalized plan, and we'll open it up for members of the public to comment.
Okay. We do have one gentleman signed up for this item on the agenda, Mr. James Bolden. Good evening.
To the Honorable Mayor, City Manager, council members, it's a pleasure to be able to speak before you today. Comments would be very brief. I want to welcome the new city manager and believe that we will see some good things in his administration, hoping one day we will be able to get to know one another to help build a better relationship, which I believe will turn and better and build a better community. I want to thank Mr... I want to thank Matt Parvenak for his comments in Channel 27 for asking those tough questions. Parvenak indicated that we have the vision, but implementing those visions is where we have fallen short, recipient of the city falling short of his vision. Between 2001, 2009, we purchased property, remodeled, thought we could count on the city resources and planning department to enforce the plan, only told by H and D that it was just a plan. In other words, we lost money partnering with the city of Topeka. Here's now that American people believe that racism has vanquished. No longer is there any division in housing, jobs equal pay. This is still a making and progress. There is no coincidence who owns all the land. Now, here we are in 2024. Houses prices are out of touch with the average consumer homelessness in the greatest country and land is at all-time high. Yes, I would agree that you can say I did not create these problems. It happened before my time. Suppose that is why you took on the task of becoming city leaders. For others, it's merely a way for you to gain the system. So with that said, I quote directly from the Bible, "Better is the poor who walks in his integrity than one perverse in his ways, though he be rich." Proverbs Chapter 28, verse 6. Cease from thy own wisdom. God delights in honesty. God delights in those who are truthful." Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Rhiannon, you said you opened it for public comment. We've had that. Is there further to consider right now except for a motion to approve setting the date for October?
Nope. All that's left is to move forward with setting the public hearing.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for the public hearing on October 15th? Motion by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Banks. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Banks.
Yes.
Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akala. And Ortiz. All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Motion carried. We'll move out to Action Items 5B. Madam Clerk.
B is a funding agreement between Gen III Construction and Development LLC and the City of Topeka.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Rhiannon Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services, will lead us through this item as well.
Rhiannon.
Thank you. So this evening before you in your packet, you have a copy of the funding agreement that is tied to the RHID for the Riverside Myers Place project. And the agreement essentially allows, if approved, the developer to pay back the city the sufficient money to cover its costs in analyzing the creation of the district, so our costs in analyzing this process. And I'm sure that if I cannot, City Attorney would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for City Attorney or for Rhiannon? Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilman Kell. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala. Ortiz.
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Motion's carried. We'll move to action item five C. Madam Clerk?
Cease a public hearing to consider comment from the public concerning the governing body's consideration whether to exceed the Topeka Metro Transit Authority's revenue-neutral rate of 4.017 and impose a proposed tax rate of 4.2 mils, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez to levy a property tax rate on behalf of the Topeka Metro Transit Authority, T M T A, that exceeds the revenue-neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney, our budget manager, will lead us through this item. Josh?
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Tonight is one of our first round of revenue-neutral rate hearings, along with our budget hearing. So what the revenue-neutral rate hearing is, this gives the public a chance to come speak on the possibility of us exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. And the first one up is the Topeka Metro Transit Authority. Their max mil rate that they can impose on taxpayers is 4.2 mils. That's the maximum rate that we set back in July. That does not preclude the council from potentially lowering that next week when we set mil rates, but this is just the maximum one they can impose on citizens. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the citizens, I guess.
Okay. Any questions for Josh before opening the public hearing? Councilman Duncan?
Josh, I don't even know if you know this. I should have emailed you this before, so it's not meant to be a trick question. Do you know, what does one mil equal for the metro?
One mil for the metro would be the same as the city, so one mil is about $1,438,000.
Okay, because of where?
Yeah, the calculation is the same.
It's the same because of, okay.
Now, what is exceeded the revenue-neutral rate to the 4.2 mils, I'd have to calculate that for you, but that's a very small number since it's only like .0 or .13 higher. So I can get you that number if you need it.
No, that's fine. I just wasn't sure if it was the same or if they had a different mil rate.
Nope, same number.
Okay. No further questions? At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Sir, would you identify yourself and step forward?
Yeah. Scott Meisenhelter, as wish to be on the agenda on property.
Sir, go to the podium, please, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. My wife and I, we moved here three years ago in the southwest part of Topeka, Kansas, and our property tax has actually gone up, up, and up over the last three years. Right now, our property tax is set at $430,000. That's an $89,000 increase in the projected property tax value. We think this is outrageous. I've taken this to the county, all the way to the council, and they basically could not show me where the 11% each-year increase comes from, not adequately in my view. Then I went to the state and presented my case to them. They basically said that the state receives very little of the property tax, that it actually sits back on the County of Shawnee and the City of Topeka. So my question to you is, why such the drastic increase in the last three years? And I guess my last request, is Topeka a sanctuary city? Yes or no? I have these questions in my mind of where is this money going? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My house is 124 years old, and it's going downhill because I only make $900 a month off disability, and it's going up worth $5,000 every year, and I need to put that money into it to make it worth more money. It can't keep going up in taxes saying it's worth more when it's going downhill because I don't have money to fix it. Cynthia Frost?
Thank you, ma'am.
I can't, I can't fix my house up as the taxes keep on going up on it. Can you live off of $900 a month? Could you fix your house if you're living off $900 a month? I can't, I can't pay them taxes. That's, that's too much. My, my daughter can't have my house after I die because you got to where disabled people can't give their property to their kids unless they're disabled also. So I guess the state's my landlord now because my daughter can't have my house, and it don't make any sense how that house can keep going up when it keeps going downhill every year.
Thank you, ma'am. For a second time, I'll ask, are you coming forward, sir?
Yes.
Okay. You'll identify yourself when you get, can you make it to the podium? Okay.
Well, basically, what you're hearing already is what you should have known already, is that we're living in a 20% Biden economy, and our inflation has gone up and eaten us out of house and home, and we can't afford to do these other things. I sent an email to, oh, I should say, my name is Melvin Adams. I live at Red Oak Court over on Yearish and 10th. I sent an email to all of the, all of the city council, and Duncan was the only one that was nice enough to send me a reply back, and I really appreciate that. He didn't answer my question, but at least he sent a reply back, and the rest of you just ignored it because you didn't think I was important, I guess. But basically, we're asking for transparency. Why do we, why are we a half a billion dollars in debt? I thought we were supposed to balance our budget every year. That shocked me when I found that out just this week. Where does all our taxpayer money go? I can name, maybe we've got too many administrators. In my opinion, that's where we are. Why do we need a mayor and a, and a city manager? Can we afford that? That's supposed to be for rich cities, and we're not rich. And we're, we're sure not putting on roads. We're called the pothole capital of Kansas for a reason. I drive all over this city for various reasons, and, I mean, the roads are atrocious. You're not putting them on roads. Why not? We need them on roads. If you had the roads in good shape, like the feds are doing on our 70, et cetera, then we wouldn't be wondering what she's doing with the money, but you're not doing that. Since I moved to Topeka, our property taxes have doubled. That was 12 years ago. She says it's been three years, but we've been here 12 years, and it's gone up every year, every year. It's gone up. And I noticed, I'm not sure it's the city manager's fault, but maybe that's his job to make that, of that motion, but I noticed he's the one that says we need to increase everything from neutral. I'm not sure that's, maybe that's what he's supposed to do. I'm not sure. But anyway, where did that 15, we had $15 million in reserve. Where'd that come from? All of a sudden, we come, we have a reserve, and we don't have our cities coming? Yeah, sure. One minute, okay. That's good. We don't, we don't have our roads covered? Why aren't we putting things on there? I've been in, like I say, I've been to Oklahoma. I've been in Oklahoma City, Wichita, Hill City, Bird City, Hayes, been a lot of places across our nation, and I've never seen any roads as bad as we've got here in Topeka. And you guys should be ashamed of yourself. And I ask people that when we came, why aren't you doing something about? Now, I've been there 12 years. Oh, and they don't care. It's a big beast of their attitude. So that's the way it goes.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Crystal Shepherd, and I'm here to represent my property management company, Eucalyptus Real Estate, on behalf of Lou McGinnis. We have several properties, multifamily housing throughout Topeka and other areas. I'm here to attest the tax increase as well, just because it, we've seen a great increase through several of our properties. That does not assist us in being able to afford, continue affordable housing for our residents, which is our main goal. So, you know, I do love Topeka. I love serving those in Topeka and being part of the community, and would like to be able to continue to serve that demographic who we assist now. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this matter? I see you all pointing, but he's not moving. Okay.
My name is Greg Buchanan. I've been here for about 40 years. I've always wondered what the purpose of city government is, and they should be doing what they can to help everybody, to be, take care of the vulnerable people, people in social security. Social security, by the way, in case none of you, any of you are aware of it, is based on the CPI. My property tax goes up 15%, and you don't change your format, you automatically get 15% increase, don't you? That's when you need to drop your back down and take a cut in your mil levy. Otherwise, you're playing with uneven chances for the rest of us. Two years in a row, 15%, then followed by 12%. You do the math. It's a little hard to get by when you guys raise yours, and then you got West Star. They like to have some money. Gas service wants money. You know, the way I look at it, you've got a hotel over there. All of us are going to be out of our homes because you taxed us out. Maybe you can put us up over there for a while. Y'all have a good day, and keep the faith.
Further public comment on this issue? That's the second calling? Okay.
I'm Mary Hawkins. I live in the Oakland area. I'm concerned about the taxes. Our property tax went up 40%. We had to go to the county and appeal it, but the problem is, is that every time you guys raise the mil levy, it's putting us out of being able to do improvements to our homes. It's also, we are retired. We're living off of social security and what pension we have, and everything's going up. We don't see any improvements in the neighborhood. Yes, we did get a new pool in the Oakland area, but there's nothing been done for the streets or the infrastructure over there. And the thing that bothers me is all the streets within the city, all the water main breaks that we're having, and we don't see where our money's really going. I think it's going to the administration. It's not going out to do the actual work that needs to be done to maintain the city. I don't know who's going to be able to do anything about it. I mean, we're fighting to try to keep the mil levy down, but everybody wants to raise it, but we don't see any improvement. So you're saying you want to bring new people into Topeka, young people, families and stuff, but the housing affordability is not going to be there. Houses that are selling for $125,000, which are really only $60,000 homes, it's outrageous. My son cannot afford to buy a house because everything is out of his reach. So we're not allowing young people to come in and be vibrant in the city because we're not making housing affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, and the third call for anyone who would like to speak to this matter? Okay. The public hearing will remain open until the R and R resolution has been considered and voted on by the governing body. After we have taken action on the R and R resolution, the public hearing will close. Now, the resolution recognizes governing body members for any comment or any motion.
This is just for transit. Is that correct? R and R regarding transit. Thank you so much.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Okay, so approval, they're asking for 4.2? To go from 4.017 to 4.2 mils, is that right?
Their, their current mil rate is 4.2 mils, and they're asking to keep it flat. That revenue-neutral rate is 4.017, which is the property taxes that went to the metro last year. If they kept their revenue-neutral rate, you, a citizen, wouldn't pay any more in property taxes to the metro than they already have. Does that make sense?
So it'll stay the same. I just want to make sure.
No, the mil rate, their mil rate is not going up. It is flat compared to last year.
Okay.
But they are exceeding the revenue-neutral rate.
Okay.
Councilman Duncan?
I was just going to explain, I'm just going to make sure we got, so, so their current mil rate is 4.2. They've requested that it remain at 4.2, which we actually approved that a while back to bake that into the, but gave them that approval. If we vote to stay revenue-neutral, the county treasurer has told us that rate would make their mil levy cap at that 4.0, whatever it is. So they could go below it further if they want to, but they couldn't exceed that number. If we vote to allow them to exceed revenue-neutral, what they're telling us, that the max cap right now that they're going to use is 4.2. Now, they could also still lower it between now and next week. I don't think they're going to because they've already presented us that 4.2, but that's, that's what it means, which will be similar to what we do on the next one. But it's really setting the cap at this point. So, so staying revenue-neutral means they can't go above that 4.0. Exceeding revenue-neutral means they cannot go above 4.2, but they can go up to 4.2.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I just want to make sure that we stay the same. I, I have not seen any adjustments that they have done. I mean, I know that they, they're using the MOD with the smaller vehicle, and I know people still are struggling to get out south, and, you know, with the MOD, right at I-70, it stops at I-70, and I have low-to-modern-income families that are on the other side, and we need to, we need to get them to move those boundaries over so that my low-to-modern-income people could use the MOD, because they can't. When Pine Ridge and Paradise Plaza and Ybar Place, those are all people that really need to use the MOD, but they can't because they stop right at the highway. And so I, I don't, I don't, I, I think we could curtail those boundaries because they're just right there, and get more ridership, and so I, I don't want to increase it by no means. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to make sure that I, I don't, don't.
Thank you, Councilman Duncan, for the, go ahead.
I have a question for Josh. As of right now, and I know this is going to change, what was this year's county average on the residential increase percentage?
I think off the top of my head, it was like 4.58%. That was the, I don't know if that, that wasn't residential. That was just total.
Total, because it includes commercial?
Yeah, that includes commercial. I'd have to reach out to do some digging on the specific residential, but overall, it was 4.58%, but I'll, I'll look it up.
No, that's fine. And that's just a reminder, I mean, every increase, I do not want to minimize it at all. Every increase is an increase. I do think, though, it's important that we understand what that number is. I know some various numbers have been shut out. Some emails, I go, 18%, 17%, 15%. I am not saying 4.5% is good. I am not saying 4.5% is good, but that is the percent. It's not in those double digits. Now, it was for a couple of years there, absolutely, but that's not the case this year. So, just want to make sure we're all at least understand what the numbers tell us. Thank you, Josh.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Josh, you may have the records, but I, I believe that TMTA has maintained that, you know, what worked with the mill levy was that it, it, it generally rode with the property values, with the inflation in the community, so if you held your line, you were, you might still need additional dollars, but at least you'd kind of stayed with that whole inflationary flow. If I'm not mistaken, TMTA has held at that 4.2 mills for maybe 10 years or more, correct?
The furthest back I have right now on my screen, last four years, it's been at 4.2. I could, I could look back farther and verify that, but over the last four years, it's been 4.2.
I think they've, they've held the line and tried to adjust the kind of services and the, the way that they provided the services the best, best way possible, but they'll, they'll certainly be faced with, if, if they can't stay mill levy neutral, that's a cut in terms of what they're, what they've got available to, to work with, so.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is kind of moving into the rumble of the budget, but in response to what Councilwoman Ortiz said about our LMI folks that need to have better transportation methods, right, and kind of looking to MTAA to do that, which obviously is going to come with, you know, the need for more funding. Well, one of the things that had happened when I first got on council, the first round, is that there had been that push for GTP to work with the major manufacturing companies that say that they needed workers, right? And so, the programs were called, I think, NOTO and SOTO, I think they were. And I'm just going to be really honest, I got knee deep in that the first couple of years that I was on city council, because we could not get commitments. Everything that I saw was no real true commitment from the manufacturing, all those big businesses out on Konza Park, I think that's where it is, Konza Park, that were looking for folks. And the LMI folks couldn't get out there because they didn't have the, the adequate transportation. We tried, there was moves to try to get them to take up the dollars and there's, you know, engage in initiatives to get the workers out there, and eventually it fell flat. And so, I think part of this is, I understand the frustration, and MTAA can't do everything unless we, you know, they end up with the ability to collect more money, but what about these large corporations that, who knows if they're on the tax roll or if they're not on the tax roll? I mean, I would have to get a printout to see Mars and Bimbo and all of them, if, if, you know, what amount of taxes they're paying. I think that that would be good for us to get all of that as a governing body, to see where they are, if they're still in that 10 or 15 or 20-year cycle where they're not having to pay anything. But it's going to be, it's, there's going to come a time where we're going to have to put pressure on the large businesses to kind of start getting involved in helping more because they're reaping a lot of the benefits. So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Further comment? Councilwoman Ortiz?
I just want to be clear, when I say MOD, MOD is just one street over to get those low to moderate income people to the stores, to Walmart. One street. I even told them, what if I tell my people to go stand on 13th Street and call you? I mean, it's, we get those emails all the time from people that can't go to the store because they take the bus home and their stuff is frozen or thawed before they get home. I think they would pump up some, generate some revenue there. Mr. Mayor, I'll talk to you and I'll talk to them again about doing that. It's a, it's a much-needed service.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No motion from the council? Councilwoman Hiller?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hiller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor. If you'll call the rule, please.
Okay, Councilmembers Miller?
I'm sorry.
Before we do this, can, Amanda, can you explain what we're voting on, please?
Okay.
A yes vote would approve the resolution allowing the MTAA, or MT?
TMTA.
TA, sorry, thank you, not the airport, transit, to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 4.017 and impose a maximum mill rate of 4.2. So, a vote yes allows them to go above the revenue neutral rate, which is the same dollar amount they collected last year.
Okay. We had a motion for a second. Call the rule.
Councilmembers Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Kel?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay, we've taken action on this resolution, so now we can close the public hearing. Do I need to gavel that, madam? I just want to make sure. I don't want to make any mistakes. I'd just like to offer a comment, based on the, the comments from Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz. There was an effort early on to really try and see if we could get some extended service in some fashion with some support and help from some of the large manufacturing and distributing companies here in Topeka. It's important to them, I know they realize this, to have a steady, reliable workforce, and that comes with people who have an opportunity for reliable transportation. It is important for them to be a part of the solution and not look to just the governing bodies, either the county or the city, to provide that impetus to get good, qualified people out to those locations. We, we can grow even more if we have more people involved in those kinds of jobs, but it has to be a relationship between the business community and the city and the county. So, I think it's important for us to follow up after this and have some meetings to talk about how we can maybe come up with another effort, maybe not the same as what we had before, but something that really includes the business community in those discussions. So, I'd just like to make that comment. Councilwoman Hiller?
Since you brought those things up, if I can throw in something that may be timely, particularly as we advance toward updating the parking downtown, and that is to consider, we talked about this years ago, but not lately, I think, encouraging them to work with businesses for satellite parking lots so that there, many cities do park and ride. We have people that live outside the city limits that could then leave their vehicles out, maybe at shopping center, near the edge of town, and take the bus in and back and still be able to pick up groceries on the way home and things like that, but relieve our, our parking as our downtown grows. So, could throw that into the conversation as well.
Again, it'd be a good item to bring up in discussions so that we can think about these things.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to Action Item 5D. Madam Clerk?
D is a public hearing to consider comment from public, from the public concerning the governing body's consideration of adopting a budget for 2025 that exceeds the revenue neutral rate, RNR, which is 35.341, and a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez to levy a property tax rate that exceeds the city of Topeka's revenue neutral rate.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney, our budget manager. Will lead us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. So, this is a similar, similar item to the last revenue neutral rate hearing, however, this is for our own city's budget. So, what this does, it allows us on the possibility to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and it sets a max mill levy rate that the city can impose at 38.952, and that's, that's the max. That doesn't mean our, our budget is set at that, or it prevents the council from changing what the budget is currently set at. So, with that, that's all I got.
Okay. We will now, at this time, open a public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to the matter. Before I repeat that again, we do have three people that I have listed already, and we'll start with the list that I have in front of me. Pardon, Councilman Duncan?
Just real quick, can we get a couple of numbers from Josh before we hear public?
Surely.
So, because I just want to make sure I'm right, or you'll tell me I'm right. So, we, we submitted a rate of 38.952. The revenue neutral rate given to us would be 35.341.
Correct.
What is our current?
Thirty, our current, what was set last year is 36.952.
Okay. Perfect. Just want to make sure my num, my math was right.
No, you're good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Okay, further questions before we move to public comment on this matter? Okay. The first person I have signed up is Earl McIntosh.
Mr. Mayor, I, I will speak over here, but I owe it to the 5,400 registered voters in Topeka that signed this petition to allow a public vote revenue neutral. I'd like to set it right here, in time of effect.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and council, I am here tonight to express my opposition to raising the revenue neutral rate. However, I want to start off by expressing my gratitude to the council. I appreciate you passing a resolution recognizing we have a property tax problem and encouraging other taxing authorities to recognize this problem as well. I also respect you for delaying the vote on the budget to hear the concerns of the citizens tonight. I appreciate that. Finally, thank you for taking 15 million from the city's reserves instead of taxing us that amount. If we have any, the citizens of Topeka must dip into our reserves every year just to meet basic needs. Mr. Mayor, our city is in financial trouble. I recently learned we are over half a billion dollars in debt. The debt has significantly increased in the past few years. We are creating a heavy burden for our kids. They can't bear this. That's a, that's a big burden. Year after year, we have been coming to this council asking for relief from the rising cost of property taxes and our home valuations. We are now at a breaking point. Mortgage and rent payments have increased at alarming rate due to increased taxes and the rising cost of insurance. The cost of food has significantly increased. Gas and electric bills have risen. Our water bill is up. Our auto and home repairs have also increased. At the same time, health insurance and medical care costs more. Most people cannot afford their medical bills or to pay a major auto or home repair. Our incomes have not kept up with inflation. We cannot bear the extra expense because our wa, our wages have not increased at the same rate as inflation. We cannot force people to give us money like you can, Mr. Mayor. If the council votes to increase property taxes above revenue neutral, then you have not listened to the voice of the people that signed this petition, 5,400 registered voters that are, live in the city limits of Topeka. You are, you are creating a burden we cannot bear. I have an additional request for you, Mr. Mayor, as I finish up here. We would like the petition, see if you would contact Governor Kelly and see if she would do a sit-down with you and discuss the property tax issue we have in here in the city or in the state. We request that you bring the petitions. You can borrow mine. I know the clerk has a copy of them. I think that it would do justice if she saw 5,400 registered voter signatures. I think it would make a big impact. And I would ask you to ask her if she would work with the legislature to help solve this problem. It's tearing our city apart. I am against voting to go above revenue neutral. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the second person I have signed up is Melvin Adams.
Well, it seems like I jumped the gun while I go and talked about the metro instead of what I was supposed to, but anyway, I'm back here where I'm supposed to be at this time, and, and you can say ditto on my speech. We're still not, don't have any more money than we had before. Our pockets are still empty, and we're still trying to get, get you some transparency out of the city council so we know what you're doing. We, we, we just don't have any transparency out of you, it don't seem like. And I watch the news all the time, and I watch what's going on, so I kind of have an idea of what's going on in, in, in this city. And my wife knows what's going on in the state, because she talks to the state representatives all the time and prays for them. But we've got to have, we've got to have some relief, and somebody's got to figure out that we can't continue to go on like we have been. Like I said before, we're not a rich city. We've got to cut budgets somewhere, and why can't we cut it? It's like in the, the teachers. The teachers don't have a decent salary because the superintendents have six-figure salaries. They went up 87% for, for, for the superintendents, and the teachers only went up 25%. It's the same type of logic. We've got to do something about it because we can't continue going the way we are. So, thank you for the ditto.
Thank you, sir. Lanell Griffith?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, greetings and thank you for this hearing. Thank you for your comments. I couldn't agree more. We are at a tipping point where a lot of everyday citizens, myself included, are coming to you pleading, saying, you know what, you're doing a lot of shiny, pretty things, making government-funded things bigger and better and shinier. I love Gage Park, I do. I do, I do, I do. But when you get to the point that your everyday citizen can't afford it, and it's like, ooh, can I afford milk this time? You got a problem, all right? I'm pleading with you. Please, stop raising our taxes. I'm going to give you some just general ideas, general ideas, general concepts that can truly benefit those who live here. Why don't you stick to your core functions, safety, roads, water, waste. Do that as the city. Let your citizens keep more of the money, the hard-earned money that they earned. Property taxes, that is where people live, whether they rent or own. They are paying to live in their home, whatever their home may be. You could potentially be taxing them out of their home. Please let that sink in, out of their home, so then they become homeless. You think we have a homeless problem now? Don't do this to the people. Don't do this to us. You can reduce your budget. Go back to those core functions. Please, make it a draw to live here, okay? Topeka already, not property taxes included, but has a relatively low cost of living. So, let that draw be realized. Don't tax people out of their homes so that they can't afford the basic necessities. We don't need nicer and nicer and nicer govern, government-funded amenities. We can have private donors fund that. Evergy Park, that's kind of fun, right? Private donor. That's smart, all right? Gage Park, lovely, love it, but it's great how it is. We can't afford it, we can't afford it. Just let that sink in. How about we go to zero-based budgeting? You look at what you spent in different budgets and say, this is what we truly need, and you start there when you consider your budget. Everyday folks are suffering. Thank you for your resolution, sir. Appreciate it. Let's act on it. Let's act on it. That which the private sector can handle, let them handle. That which is in the private sector, such as hotels, let it be in the private sector. That's how we will function better, and it'll make it a lot easier to have a balanced budget and not get into debt. Debt is bad. Let's fix our roads and the water lines underneath it. Let's prioritize our public safety. I'm not saying that you're, you're not. I'm saying those core functions I'm happy to pay for, but the amenities, I'm just not rich enough, and there's a lot of us that we just don't have the money for that. Thank you so much. Please, consider my plea, our plea. God bless.
Thank you. Okay, those are the three persons that I had signed up previously, but I will make the call again. Is there any other person who would like to speak to this issue? Is there any other person who would like to speak to this issue?
No, you probably go more articulate with that.
Hi, Your Honor. Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. What we're not talking about, oh, first, Earl McIntosh, what a hero. The five, yeah, thank you. 5,000, whoa. Once my voice got heard. 5,400 people. Five thousand four hundred people. Now that's an activist group. That's a group that can change this community. 5,000. I wish you'd have left that out there. That was a great prop. And Lanell, thank you. I echo everything that they've said and would like to give the ditto. Thank you. We're not addressing the elephant in the room. And revenue neutral is almost the perfect acronym. Because we need to do things different in this community with the way we do economic development. You've got 14 people, you spend $3.5 million. They're giving away money at Go Topeka like the United Way. Let's just redefine what economic development is, and I'll feel better about it. And if it's just, if everybody in the community says, well, let them just keep giving away money willy-nilly, but the idea in the beginning, when we went out and got the quarter cent sales tax in the original, was to broaden the tax base and increase the population. It hasn't done that. And I think one of the most interesting things Lanell brought up is if we just make Topeka nice for us, like a tourist town, we've got the location. When I used to lease a mall that we owned in Reno, Nevada, man, it was like a happening town. Imagine me in Reno. Man, it was a time of my life. And, but those people were really smart. They were the best numbers people of all the dealmakers I've ever met. Because they're there to cater to the people right when they're in front of them. They want to sell them something, they want to make a deal. Reno was a happening town. Now, you've sat on land, we've sat on land that you bought for me 18, 20 years ago, and a lot of the problem over here is on the county side with the treasurer, the county commission, and the county counselor. A lot of it. And we're investigating that. But we need to do things differently. Just think what's going to, I saw the Jeddah agenda for tomorrow. It's not about, you can keep talking about job creation and this and that, but I want to talk about how is that deal going to broaden the tax base? And how's it going to grow the population before I give a nickel of the money away? And I got to convince the 5,400 people that we need to do things differently in our community. I don't think anybody's willfully, you're just going down the wrong path, and you're sold, you're sold a bill of goods by the wrong people. It's heartbreaking to hear, I'll protest that lady's taxes for, but it's heartbreaking to hear what's going on. But it's because we're not generating new income. We're not growing our community. And then the taxes will, they'll fall in place when we grow our community. Thank you.
Okay, second time to ask, sir?
My name's Leo Hafner. I was not going to speak tonight, but I do want to voice my agreement with everybody who's spoken earlier, and I would like to say that those 5,400 signatures, that's an understatement of the people that would sign that thing. Because I took some of those documents with me to a Topeka Jump meeting at Washburn University one evening. I was just going to see if people around me would sign it. Once the word got out I had it, people were mobbing me, wanting to sign it, and there were a lot of people who were disappointed because they didn't live in the Topeka City limits. So there's a lot more than 5,400 people out there that would like to voice their opinion about this. And, you know, I don't even know where to begin, but the hotel was mentioned, you know, we're sinking in up to $10 million-ish already in this thing. We're going to hire a real estate consultant to help us sell it back to a private sector owner. Why did you take it away from a private sector owner? It was in the private sector. It's not a government function to run a hotel. The only way that hotel's ever going to be successful is you either have to increase your convention business at the expo center, the whatever they call it now. You're going to either have to convince non-convention people to book a room there, and good luck with that, because there's nothing around there, a Sonic Drive-In if people want to go to someplace close to eat. So you're not going to have that avenue. So maybe go to the legislature and see if they're going to grant you a special permit to get a casino there. That might do it. But other than that, you have wasted our tax dollars on that, and I guarantee you, we're never going to get our money back on it. The city's going to own that place until it caves in. There are other things, you know, the things I read in the paper, like they take the transient gas tax money from the Evel Knievel Museum, and now we're going to have a skating rink, which goes to the point, the lady of the things, the niceties, oh, everything's great. Let's do this, let's do that. We need a skating rink like we need a hole in the head at this point in time, when you are literally taxing older people out of their homes. I want you to know that to pay my property tax increase, my property taxes have gone 20, up 21% the last two years. I took out my landline from my home, which was 75 bucks a month, and I did away with my pest control, which was 30-some dollars a month, so that I can pay that. Tell me what I'm going to take away to do this next round of increases. Y'all don't understand what you're doing to people, and you need to. You need to take it seriously. Tell me one or two things in the budget that you have done away with or significantly reduced. And I'm not talking about new proposals. I'm talking about existing programs, because I guarantee you, they're there. And one final thing that I'll talk about, 10 years ago, there were reports done on both the Topeka Police and the Topeka Fire Departments that showed Topeka was way overstaffed, especially in the fire department. Nothing's ever been done with that. At that point in time, I think the estimate was $5 million a year in extra salaries we were paying. Nothing's ever been done.
Thank you. Last call. Anyone's wishing to speak to this matter? Okay. The public hearing will remain open until the R and R resolution has been considered and voted on by the governing body. After we have taken action on the R and R resolution, the public hearing will close. I recognize now the governing body. Were any comments or questions or motions? Councilman McHale?
I'm going to probably be the bad guy in this situation, and I'm going to wear it. But I just ask that everyone listen to everything I have to say before passing judgment on what I'm saying. Not taking some action to address the looming budget issues is paramount to kicking the can down the road. We're not only talking about, talking about possible job losses, but delays in services will affect everyone in Topeka. Almost three years I've been on this council, we have been, have had the practice in improving the city in many different facets, and that includes looking at ways to save Topeka's money. By standing still, we're moving backwards. The roads and infrastructures, as mentioned, like the water lines, sewer lines, will go back and deteriorate, and we'll be doing more repairs than replacements. We, the city council, have been trying to get our departments fully staffed as possible in those three years, investing time and money into each employee. By not looking forward, we might have to let several employees go from most departments. People have told me, just worry about police, fire, roads, water. Well, if we take care of those and fully staff those, we will not have other departments in the city. By letting these employees go, we will put each and every one of them into a financial burden that may have several years to crawl out. We will require the remaining staff to pick up the slack, which will cause delays in projects, force overtime, and employee burnout. If the overtime, the overtime that we will accrue with smaller staff will add up, and if not properly budgeted, will take another bite out of the budget. By not addressing the future now of the number of repairs, we take priority over replacement. Service shortages will occur more and last longer. We, as a city, have not raised the middle levy in 12 years. We've actually lowered it the previous two years. The amount brought in is based off property values, which has climbed 10 out of the 12 years. In the last year, you've seen a decrease in property value as most goods have continually A major cost to the city of Topeka is wages. We, as a council, have wanted to get the wages competitive across the board to retain and attract employees so we can serve the citizens and grow our city. I am not against trimming the budget, finding cost savings, and looking at ways of doing more with less. But I do not think by cutting our staff and services in the future, without taking action, we will not serving the city or our employees. As I stated before, it's been 12 years since we've raised the middle levy and have decreased it the previous two years. Things like Shawnee County, Evergy, Kansas Gas, et cetera, have all raised costs, not the city of Topeka. To the public, our budget is public record. Anyone can take a look at it, make suggestions on where we can maybe try to find cost savings and other ways to do things. We, as a city, cannot control Shawnee County, Evergy, Kansas Gas, the housing market, insurance, et cetera. As brought up before, Gage Park, that was actually voted on by the citizens and passed by the citizens. Nothing to do with the city council. Again, if we just worry about the main functions of road, water, fire, police, many other services will go away from our city, and we will not be able to help the people with, through our social service grants committees, through our other programs that help the low incomes. I, myself, live in a low-income, low to moderate-income community. My wife and I were on social services such as food assistance and cash assistance for several years, on and off for 10 years, about nine years total. I understand what it's like to have those budget constraints and try to find ways to work things. But if we have no city employees, if we have no city infrastructure, what do we have as a city? I do not want to raise the middle levy. I don't want to burden anyone more than we have to. But to cut now, or, you know, in the near future, to save is not going to save. It's going to cost us in the long run. That's what we've been doing the last, at least the last three years I've been in the council. We've been improving the roads, we've been improving the water lines, the sewer lines, everything that can't be seen, we've been improving, and then turn around because it was neglected for so many years prior to me and prior to everyone on the council. It's neglected for so many years, Cam's kicked down the road. The last three years, we went working on those things, and to sit there and kick the can down the road again, we're just going backwards, and we threw money at nothing such as roads, such as the water lines, such as the parking garages that were neglected by previous councils. We have to look at the future, not just the budget itself, but what it's going to do to affect everyone in the city by possibly having to slash many things out of our budget just to operate as a city. And I understand, like I said, I may be the bad guy in this situation, and I'll own it. But to me, we have to look at sustaining our city and not slashing it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a number of things. One is that I do want to agree with Councilman McHale on a couple of things. And I know the real thing to get upset about, and I hear it a lot in the district that I serve, is the roads and the infrastructure. And people want to know where, people want to know when. And so I can bring up in my district, which is District 2, any number of infrastructure improvements that have gone on across the district. I can bring up numerous improvements that have happened in Oakland. But I also think, and I understand everybody is upset, and let me just tell you, this woman right here, I'm on a fixed income. I'm on a tight income, me and my husband. And we help our grandchildren, and we help pay for things for them. We help as a family. We help each other financially. That is the way our family works. And so I don't have all kinds of money to throw around, and this is very troubling. People are really upset about the roads. Well, let me just tell you, go on to the city website, because unfortunately, you're not going to hear it all on the news, and you will see a voluminous amount of improvements that have happened across this city. And I understand that there are still potholes in this city. And I have been one of the number-one critics of this city, and still am in a lot of ways. I didn't vote for the hotel. I didn't vote for your utilities to be, your water rate utilities to be increased. Am I going to vote to go above revenue neutral? Probably. We went for help in the state to get money for homelessness with this huge surplus the state has, and they offered nothing. We are trying to clean up LLC slum lords in this city that make this city, in my opinion, someplace that a lot of people don't want to come because we have so many multifamily slum lords here. And one of them just spoke and was working for a slum lord. And so we are going in and trying to fix all of these things. All of that takes money. Do I believe that we are top-heavy in some of our departments? Yes, yes. And I've already said, if you watch the council meetings, because you're not going to hear it on the news all the time because they've got lots of other stories to cover, but if you watch the city council meetings on YouTube, on the Facebook page, they're live, that we have to start looking at the departments on where we are top-heavy. We just had a huge increase with police and their salary, and it was really a difficult decision to say yes to that. But we keep hearing how understaffed we are. I get so many emails from across the city, not just in District 2, about the need for more law enforcement. We keep hearing more and more about the unsheltered population. All of that is going to take money. And I think it is a wonderful idea to go to Governor Kelly and talk with her, but also let's realize who's running the legislature right now. And we have, there's a huge surplus up there, and we're not seeing much of it over here. So I understand that there is so much suffering going on. I live in the heart of a low to moderate income district, in the heart. I don't go and try to get away from it, escape it. That's where my family was, came from, and we have opted to stay there. So whatever my constituents deal with, I'm dealing with it, right in it, right in it with them. And so again, these are all really hard decisions. I don't think that there is any one person on this council that does not take this deeply, deeply to heart. But I think what we're looking at as well is issues on a municipal level, on a county level, on a state level, on a national level, and I think that we're seeing a lot of crumbling happening. And it is average folks that end up bleeding out the most on it. But for the services that are provided, and if anybody from my district wants to come and ask me about the enhancements that have been done in my district, I would be more than happy to roll those off. than happy to roll those off to, to anyone that would be interested. Because we have the infrastructure, the physical infrastructure, we have human infrastructure, and we have to take both into consideration. And we have looked into trying to see if we can expand, even get a living wage in this city, and we're being stopped with that by the legislature. So it is very complex, it is nuanced, none of it is easy. But I would encourage folks to go even one step further than watching the news or reading the newspaper and actually looking at the City of Topeka website where there is a plethora of information, and watching every Tuesday, the city council meetings, or coming to attend the city council meetings. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Josh, how much, was it 30,000 of ARPA funds that we put into the streets? Was that the number?
No, so we got $46 million of ARPA money, 10 million of that went to social service agencies and then...
How much did we put in the streets?
I would have to calculate that real quick, because we had 36 million dedicated for public, or for CIP projects. Some of that included parking garages, city hall, fire trucks.
I think it was about 30 mil. So I, thank you for, for what you said, Christina. I, I agree. You know, we, we got our budget book about a month ago. I don't, I can say with, for myself, I'll just speak for myself, that's all I do is sleep and eat and pray about this budget. I too live in southeast Topeka, but it doesn't matter where you live, and it doesn't, because it's affecting us all, it's affecting us all. And I'm trying to ask questions and see where we can trim and see what we can do. And so I want, I wanted to say that because I don't know if people really realize how much money we've put when we got the ARPA funding. We could have done a lot with it. We could, we could have done things like we've been accused of, of the bells and whistles, but we didn't. We heard what people had to say. We heard what they had to say, and we, and we put it in the streets. I also want to say this, I think all of us have looked at the budget in a different eye view, and at some point in time, we do have to do something. We, we haven't raised the mill levy, but we, we've gotten blamed for it. We get blamed for everything. Whatever the county does, whatever the state does, it always comes back to us. So you really need to know about those entities, whatever 501, the library, whatever they do, we get blamed for it. And I always say, no, it's, it's not us, it's not us. I went to pay my mortgage this month, and it went up. And I didn't think about it, I gave them the money and I left. And they called me, they hit me with a late charge, and, and so I'm being affected too. And they said, hey, you, you owe 72 more dollars. And I was like, what? For what? So I had to go back in and readjust that. It's hitting all of us, all of us. I had to go back because I really didn't think about how much it is. I'm, I'm trying to pay my house off, but I'm also trying to make sure I have enough for me and my family to survive, or if I need something extra. So I think we need to look at that into consideration as well. I don't see a lot of fluff spinning, but I'm looking, I'm looking. I'm talking to my colleagues, I'm asking them, what do you think? What do you think about this? What do you think about that? And so I guess it's kind of hard when you come up and you, and you talk about the gas company. When we raised utility rates, what was that, a year ago? I think it was a year ago, we also put in, was it half a mil, Josh? We put in some funding because I would, did not vote on it, but we did put in some funding for the low to moderate income people. So I, I heard a lady, I know she's gotten away from us, and she makes 900, there's some programs out there that she qualifies for. That's something that all of us around this table said, if we're going to raise our utility rates, we want to make sure that our low to moderate income people, our retirees, all of those people, people on Social Security, we want to make sure that they're able to, able to pay their utilities. And we did that. And there's, and there's, there's help out there for them. We didn't just want to raise utilities and not think anything about it. We don't have any control, I think it's been said about gas or electric, we don't, we don't have any control over that. And, and I heard it this evening saying, do we need a mayor and a city manager? Well, the people voted on that. They voted for this form of government, government. So we can't get rid of the city manager, and we can't get rid of the mayor. We have to take that back for a vote. So if you don't like it, you're going to have to take it back for a vote. But that's the way it is. We, we, we are trying to follow a lot what the voters want, and trust and believe we are doing everything in our power to keep it as low as possible because it hits us as well. And I, I'm, I'm kind of struggling with this, and I don't really know which way I'm going to go, but I want you guys to know, we feel your pain, even though you don't think so, we do feel your pain. Let's talk about insurance, my home insurance, let's talk about that. I don't know if we have insurance people out there, but it has raised sky high. Are you guys taking those 500, 5,000 signatures to the air insurance company? Because you should, you should go find your agents and ask them. I called mine. I've got a meeting with them next week. Because if I bundled, it's cheaper. It ain't cheaper because I'm bundling and I'm still not cheap. I haven't heard that said on our insurance people. Where are they at? No, I'm not calling nobody's name out.
I haven't even responded to that.
No, 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 no. I'm not calling.
I was called out, that's the only reason.
I'm not, I'm just saying, it's all over. Went to the store, I don't know what I bought, but it was 72 dollars. So we're all feeling this pain, we're all feeling it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick comments before, I have lots of notes here. First of all, I just want to, we are not a sanctuary city for the man who asked. He also made the comment that set me off, not because he said it, because, and I've railed on this for a month now. He, he said that he went to the state and they said, you got to go back to the cities and counties. The state misled you, sir. They called, of the eight tax entities in this county, they are number four on the list. Of all the eight, of all those eight entities, they are the only tax entity in the last two decades who has never lowered their mill levy in the last 20 years. They do not take a revenue neutral rate vote, they exceed revenue neutral every year without even a conversation about it. And state law partially dictates how valuations are done. So when the state themselves or our state legislators point the finger back at us, as I have told everybody, of course we have a role to play, and we are not going to abdicate that role. But do not let the state pretend like it is cities and counties and school boards who are the quote-unquote problem, because that is their smoke and mirrors to hope you don't keep asking them the tough questions. Last year, I voted to stay revenue neutral. This year, it's telling us that our revenue neutral rate would be 35.341. Our current rate is 36.952. Last year, our revenue neutral rate would have been one mil less, 35.952, give or take, which is why that was an easy vote for me last year. That was equivalent to similar, what is this year? 1.4 million dollars. I felt last year, we could find that 1.4 million. I lost that vote, that's fine, this is how the process works, but that was much easier than this year's conversation. If you take the difference of 35.341 and our current rate, that's about 1.6 mils, which is about 2.1 million dollars. So if we just kept our mill levy flat, or went down, we'd have to cut 2.1 million. Our current budget is proposing about 37.952, that's a difference of about 3.5 million. And I'll touch on some of that later, but I want to put those numbers out there because it then became, has become for me, if we stay, if I vote to tell us to stay revenue neutral, what does that mean? What is the tipping point for me that I have had to look at, that we have done, that says I should or should not do that? And for me, it was a decision we made a couple of months ago, and it was the number one thing on the list when we did our community survey of what we needed to improve, and that was public safety. And it was not an easy discussion, we had it both in executive session and we had it both in public meetings, as to what raises we had to give our police department. And I'm not blaming our police department for this situation, all right? We did market studies, and we realized that in order to keep, retain, and bring in people, we had to raise some salaries. The budgetary impact to that next year is 6 million dollars. It is by far, not even close, outside of some public works project because of the cost of inflation, our largest increase in expense next year. So that's a policy decision we have had to make. Do we make that policy decision, what that expense means for our public safety in this community? And then what is that impact when it comes time to take this revenue neutral rate vote? And so as I look at it, that expense to me should not suffer by this decision, but then you have to offset that somewhere. And I don't see 6 million dollars yet to cut to totally offset that, that we can do at this point. I see other cuts. I'd like to remind everybody, has been said a few times tonight, this vote's not going to set our mill levy. That does not happen until we approve our final budget, which will be next week. All this does is create the framework we must stay within during that final determination. We have not raised the mill levy itself in 13 years, and the last three years, we have lowered it. Yes, I will be the first to tell you, that is not the same as staying revenue neutral. Yes, we are capturing that percentage increase. But it also says something, when a lot of other communities have had to raise that mill levy, that for 13 consecutive years, the capital city has kept it flat, and the last three has committed to lowering it. It's not nothing, but I also understand people's frustration that sometimes it's not enough. I'll also say that over the past several months, I've actually received more emails asking me to fund things than I have asking me to cut things. This includes putting more money into police, and fire, and infrastructure, and homelessness, and blight. Now, having gotten those emails, I've had to tell those people, I hear you, but I still think we have to trim the budget, not add. And that's the tough decision we've had to make with those members of the community who are asking us to fund whatever their projects are. But I use this as a reminder to citizens that for us to put more money into programs that you want to see more developed, come at a price. Some we can do by shifting money around and making cuts, and we're doing that. As the city manager has said, they have cut almost a million dollars from this budget when they brought it to us prior. And sometimes, though, it means we have to keep mill levies flat to make sure we're still funding these things. Our budget's online, both the general budget and the line item, it's really big, it's a lot of large, very complicated, but it's kind of fascinating. We are elected to make the tough decisions. That's why we're here, it's our job to find savings, it's our job to dig into it, that's why you elect us, and we all understand that responsibility, and we take it seriously. However, I do ask citizens at times to look at that budget, and instead of sometimes always just saying, cut, 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 or stop doing that, tell me where to cut. I don't disagree with you sometimes, but what programs can we cut? And some of you have sent great suggestions, and I've sent those on, and we've had conversations with staff and the city manager, and some of those have been enacted. So we do listen to citizens, we do put those things in place. We have several examples the last couple of years of citizen-driven cost savings that came from good ideas. But, but that's more helpful sometimes to us, because we will not solve this alone. We may be 10 smart people, and we hire a lot of very good people who are working very hard, but there's a reason we're called a community, and that means you getting involved and bringing stuff to us forward so we can know specifically where you want us to put those efforts. Despite what might be my vote to exceed, I am still not going to support a budget this year that increases the mill levy. So I said that last week, I'm going to keep to it, we'll see what we get in this week, what we're talking about later this week or next week. But at, at, at the high end, I will only support a budget that keeps us continued for one more year at a flat mill levy as to where we are now, and not raising it. If we can even lower it, great, but I'm not going to make that argument tonight, we got another week. I, I'll say to Councilmember Ortiz's, there's a lot of other costs that have gone up. She's right, Kansas, for a lot of reasons, we're, we're in the top 10 in the country, where homeowners insurance went up 32% on average the last two years, but there's a lot of other costs that have gone up. Some of those we can have an impact on to some degree, and when we can, I think we've tried, a lot of them we can't, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't advocate on behalf of some of those savings, having the power of the, of the city. That one, this past year, again, we are one mil above revenue neutral from 2024. On the average home, on the high end, that's about 20 dollars. On the low end, that's about 5 dollars, depending upon how you do the math and what your home is valued. So just keep in mind that while I understand people's frustration with us not staying revenue neutral possibly, we're not five, six, 10 mils above revenue neutral. We were one this year, at worst, I believe will be one and a half for 2025. Again, I understand that's not enough for some folks, and I get it. As to Councilwoman Ortiz's point, and Councilmember Valdiviaca's point, we understand, we talk, we are all in the similar situations. But I do think it needs to be recognized that we are not that far ahead of revenue neutral as some communities are. We're very close to actually being there. And so the cost savings, while I will never belittle, and it's all significant, every dollar counts, is not super in terms of the actual dollar amount. Finally, because I know you're ready for me to stop talking, revenue neutral is not a silver bullet. It was intended when it was created, and it has done this, and I think positively, to create transparency. It does force us to have these conversations, to explain to people what mill levies are, to have them take a better look at it, and it does put the right kind of pressure on elected officials to look at their budgets hard, and take serious looks at what their levies are and where they can be more efficient. That's a good thing. But that was its intention. Its intention was never to be the silver bullet that suddenly lowers mill levies. And that's been my frustration, which I have been expressing for several months, as to the complicated system that we have today. Again, we're one of eight taxing entities, we have a role to play, but lowering property tax rates is going to take that cooperative effort between us, the county, the state, and even the school districts, among others. It's going to take legislation, it's going to take improvements to the valuation system, it's going to take us working with the county treasurer to see what changes they need us to advocate for on their behalf. And there are other steps we can continue to take as a city, I've been outlining those for months, I will not go over those again, but they're on my social media, they're on my website, I'm happy to email them out, we're working on those in our legislative policy, we've worked on those in some of this budget by expanding the tax rebate program that we passed last year to make some new individuals qualify for that a little bit more. So we are finding ways to reduce the tax burden, particularly on our most vulnerable, and we'll continue to do that. So I'm with everybody else, we look at this every day, we take it very seriously, and it's just, we have to find the balance between paying for those services, but understand, we're going to make some cuts in this budget, I hope, in the next week, and we're going to talk about some of those as we go, and, and hear those suggestions that you have brought to us. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. One more thing on what Councilwoman Duncan was talking about. And again, people watching the meetings, the Tuesday meetings, I know it can infringe on time, but these are not ordinary times that we are in. And I'm thinking about what we have been working so hard on for the past several years, and it is playing out in our aggressive and proactive legislative agenda. And what we are trying to do, I believe, and I think that there would be more or less agreement on, on the city council, is we are trying to break down the silos, not only within the city, we're trying to break down the silos with the county, we're trying to break down the silos, you know, trying to bring in the Shawnee County delegation that is at the legislative level to help us carry our message forward, that we need the legislature to start listening to municipalities more, especially the municipalities that are really trying to change the narrative, and to break down the silos with, within the legislature itself. I have never, that I'm aware of, and I could be wrong, known of a time where we have been so aggressive about, we have to start establishing better, deeper, non-bS partnerships, so that the suffering, the legislature can really see how many folks are suffering at the municipal level. Because I'm sorry, I'm, sometimes I think they're kind of lofty up there, but at any rate, I think that there's a lot to be said, because it's once those silos come down, it's that the challenges really come on, are we, are we going to work together or not? And people may not like to hear all of this, it may not meet what they expected, you know, to come in and hear tonight at a council meetings, but this is the difficulty of the political realm that we are in. And breaking down the silos is one of the most challenging of all of this, all of it. And breaking down the silos is one of the most challenging of all of this, all of it. But until the silos are broken down, this pain that we're all feeling, in my opinion, is going to increase. Because people are in their little bubbles. And I'm not one for bubbles. And I would say that we will tell you, we will share our legislative agenda and how impacting we are trying to make it, to give this SOS that we need help, and we need to start working together better. And that the City of Topeka is trying to move the narrative forward. And so I think that people need to understand that as well. Public comment is really important, it's really needed. People that sit and listen and want to comment and participate in government is so crucial. The other part is to that, is understanding the complexities through watching the meetings, not just relying on the news, through watching the meetings and talking individually with your city council people, looking at the website. It's all part of the puzzle pieces. And it's not, you know, it can be belaboring, it can be time-consuming, but that is what participatory government, in my opinion, is about. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Kell?
I just wanna point out the simple fact of, you know, about three years I've been on here, and I've had about three really, heard really, three really good ideas that have come from our staff on cost cutting. In 2024, buzzword of the year so far has been U-Bass from Braxton, a cost-effective way to resurface our streets. You know, I went on a tour, and our sign department does certain signs now in-house to save money. They had to buy a machine, but over time, that saves the city a whole bunch of money by doing it in-house. Our salt grine, done in-house now. So we're saving loads of money on that. And some of this stuff comes from our employees that come up with these great ideas, and go out there and try things, and see how they work, and then bring it to us and say, here's a way I found to save some money. I think every year, we've found some major cost savings through our employees. And I wanna congratulate them on that, because I know it's hard to look at a budget, but then also to be brave enough to sit there and say, yeah, this idea may cost a little bit in the year one, year two, but by year three, four, five, we're saving all this money by bringing it in-house, or a different way of doing it. So I just wanna congratulate our staff for always trying to find those cost-saving ways also.
Thank you. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I feel it's very important that we let you know that you are heard. We see your passion, we see your want for change. All the things you hear outside of this room may say or tell you that we are not trying to make change, we are. Change is never comfortable, and change hurts sometimes. Change also may not look the same to everyone. The transition of that change may not be in the way that you personally want it or believe it should affect you. The taxes we pay are something we all have to pay, although none of us want to pay them. There are programs right now that can help Topeka citizens seek relief, just like Councilwoman Ortiz mentioned. Like other council members mentioned earlier, we're very transparent. We're accessible to each and every one of you to know and not hear what the actual facts are. Secondly, they are there to make sure that we as a whole, not just me and you, have a better time living in the city. Like council members have mentioned, you are able to see exactly how the dollars are spent, to a T. Our budget is open and public. We take this transparency seriously. So like Duncan said, tell us where you want the cuts. We can make cuts after cuts, but that doesn't mean the things we have to expense are going to go down in their price. You and I both know that's not how the way for-profit companies work, which we have to work with to get things done in our community. I don't know if I'm smart, like Councilwoman, or Councilman Duncan said, I apologize. But I am honest. We are accessible as a city council, so we're an easy place to vent frustration. We get that, we understand what we signed up for. And to blame us for things we don't know, or we don't have much control over. For the things we do have control over, if you have an idea, please reach out to us. Please reach out to me or any city council members, city manager, people, anyone that is accessible, reach out to us, okay? Anybody you prefer to speak with, that's fine. Whatever your comfort level is, reach out to them, okay? We can chat about your ideas, see how plausible it is, and see if any of the staff can make it happen, all right? But know that we are all here to serve the community. You, your families, and everybody else. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Councilman. For the comment? Councilwoman Hiller?
Give it a shot. I really appreciate what everyone has covered, and I appreciate too that you all are here and have raised the issues. It really does matter. I appreciate the suggestions we've had so far. I wish Mr. Adams was still here. You know, we've been a little overwhelmed by all the comments. I'm pretty good at responding those. I have been able to correspond back and forth with some. It sounds like others have been able to reach others. But we really are accessible and are doing our best. What we've heard a little bit today, and certainly what I had, what I learned in some of the exchange, was just a misunderstanding of even, you know, how the increases occurred, and exactly what really small amount of the tax base we're talking about tonight. A lady that I was talking back and forth with thought we were over Washburn University in the airports, and we heard people thinking that we were over the Gage Park thing, which we're not. You know, the reason we took the hotel was to protect the $50 million investment we all voted for, or most people did, I guess, to fix up the Expo Center so that it didn't have something that was running down badly right next to it. And also that there was a place for people to come so that it would grow and fly, and that those investment dollars that the voters voted on voluntarily to fix up that facility would bear fruit, therefore reducing hopefully taxes for all of us, because sales tax is really a good contribution to that. So if, when you do give us the ideas, if we respond that, oh, well, that's important, but that's not what we do, understand that we're not trying to push it off, these dollars that we're talking about, that come from property tax and go into our general fund, really are for those fundamentals. They historically have been, and you would see them there today looking for police, fire, streets, all those public safety kinds of things and fundamentals. If there are particulars that you think shouldn't be done, or that we should cut, we are all open to that, but it takes a pretty deep dive into it to see it. That said, I want to assure you that, though you heard me before, support staying mill levy neutral for the bus, and I have supported that for this fund as well. I've been spending a lot of time on it, and think that we can, when I run the numbers on it, we've got that at first declared $15 million shortfall, which the staff has said has knocked back to 14. But when you look at some of the things that were temporary set aside to take the edge off that budget, and the vacancy factor that's in there, and some discussion of migrating items from cash to bonds, it really totals about $20 million, and that worries me a lot. And I've worked hard on, I think we can come up with as much as $10 million to cut back on that. I've worked with the city manager on that somewhat, not prepared to go item by item through that. Because we're all gonna come down to the wire here as we go toward our vote on the budget itself. But understand that I've looked at it and have come up with what could be 10. Others have looked at it as well. Your thoughts? Keeping in mind that that's our police, and our fire, and our street workers, our utilities that have been mentioned are taken care of through the utility itself. But we try and combine them to save money, to put new water lines under the streets before we rebuild the streets, things like that. Councilwoman Kell has done a good job of pointing out some of the other fairly consistent economies that staff have come up with that we've certainly supported and implemented. So we're trying, and really appreciate those good ideas, and we'll do the best we can.
Okay, I'd like to make a couple of comments before we ask for a vote on the resolution. I think, I can't, I think, top what my colleagues on the council have spoken to during this discussion. If you're listening, you're listening to people who can really articulate the details of what we're considering. And they articulate it well because they've studied it. They've taken time to look at this over and over and over. They ask the hard questions, they make suggestions and changes where necessary. The one thing that I heard earlier today was about the transparency of our government. And I would defer to my colleagues, Councilwoman Ortiz and Hiller, who have been long-serving, I won't say all that, and as a city employee for a long time. It's been my observation that oftentimes, that word transparency is thrown about, I don't know, just willy-nilly. But when there's some truth to it, it really does give the public some concern about how their government is operating the city. From my observation, I have never served with a better group of council members who have taken that challenge of transparency to heart. They have done everything they can to make transparency a part of everything that they do. Each council member has its own projects that they'd like to pursue, and sometimes they'll work with them with another council member, or sometimes they'll work alone on it. But when it comes to the budget, they all realize this is the biggest decision that they will make as a council member. And they put every bit of thinking and heartfelt consideration from the citizens that they hear into making recommendations for this budget. The budget affects all of us, no matter where we live in this town. And so it's important for us to understand that that's why this body is elected, is to represent the city as a whole, not just in certain parts of the city. But as a whole, I can tell you, the right and the left, and the north and the south, have all given consideration to those things that are necessary for this community to sustain, and beyond that, to grow and get better. There is some truth that we need to very seriously look at our interior infrastructure, make us that quality of place that continues to bring people here, because we are bringing people to Topeka. But we have to have the roads, we have to have quality housing, we have to have good water, we have to have a safe, I repeat, a safe place by our public safety teams so that people will feel comfortable in this city and want to stay here for long term. And I want to thank my governing body members for all of the time they have put into this. I know that next week we'll make another decision, but tonight, I think this decision shows, and the discussion shows, how seriously they take this matter. And when we're accused of just ignoring or not paying attention, that's far beyond what this governing body has done. They put it under a microscope, believe me. Some of them really get into it. And that's good, because that's the kind of detail that's important for us. So I appreciate the comments from the public, because they're letting us know how they feel. Quietly, as individuals and private citizens, we probably feel the same frustrations in many ways. But publicly, our responsibility and duty is to serve this community as a whole, and to look out for the betterment of this community. And so for that, I thank my colleagues for the discussion this evening. And if there's no further comment, I would like to ask the clerk to read the resolution again, and call for any motion from the governing body.
Okay, the resolution is introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez to levy a property tax rate that exceeds the City of Topeka's revenue neutral rate.
Okay, we have heard the resolution, is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Kell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Alcala, Valdivia Alcala. If you call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Mayor Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Alcala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Banks?
Yes.
Kell?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have 10 yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Motion's carried, and thank you again for the discussion. Move on to action item 5E. I'm looking at the time, it's a little after 8 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor, can you close that public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Now that we've made a vote on that resolution, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, I'd like to take a 10-minute recess to give the governing body a chance to take a break before we go on to the next public hearing and resolution. Thank you for reminding me. Okay, well, we, coming out of recess, we'll continue with our agenda. Our next agenda item is 5E. Madam Clerk?
E, sorry. It's just, public hearing, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2025 operating budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McInerney will, Budget Manager will take us through this item.
Josh?
Thank you, City Manager. So what this is, it's a public hearing for our operating budget. What we just had previously was the revenue neutral hearing, which was about exceeding, possibly exceeding the revenue neutral rate for the mill levy. This is just more of a public hearing on general budget items, questions and comments, concerns the public might have. And it's already been alluded to tonight. Our current mill rate is 36.952, which was set last year. This budget is proposing a mill rate of 37.952. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Before we go into this, at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak to this matter. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? I knew you'd wait for the third one. Is there anyone present?
I just wanna say that in the future, public safety is gonna be economic development. And at the Sheriff's Department, we need to make sure he has enough infrastructure to relocate. But the dollars spent for public safety are gonna keep us safe. And that's gonna, if we're, if we're just overrun... But that's what's gonna attract people, besides lower taxes, and the fact that you live here. That's gonna keep, that's gonna make people want to live in our town safety. So thank you.
Thank you. I did have Mr. Earl McIntosh signed up as well. Is there anyone present who would like to speak to this matter? I am, but I have to ask it three times. Must be present to win. Okay. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this matter for the third time? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I will close the public hearing. Now we'll move on to non-action items.
A is a discussion related to the imposition of real estate liens on properties that have received utility services but have failed to pay for such services.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Nicole Malott. Our utilities deputy director will lead us through this item.
Nicole?
Do I need to do something to start the slideshow? Okay. No worries.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We'll be back in front of you next week for approval of our 2024 Utilities Lien Ordinance. But I just want to take a couple of minutes to discuss the process and these, this year's numbers with you. City of Topeka provides water, wastewater, stormwater, and fire line services to a variety of customers located both inside and outside the city limits. When customer utility bills become delinquent, our normal delinquency controls are to turn off the customer's water service until the customer makes payment in full on the delinquent amount. However, that's not always possible. Some customers receive wastewater service or stormwater service from the city, but no water service. This greatly reduces our ability to induce payments from customers with delinquent amounts since we cannot shut off their water. Most of these customers are, most of these are customers of rural water districts. And the rural water district cannot shut off water service for failure to pay a bill to the City of Topeka. Lot of dots on that map there, but here's the summary of them. We sent out 175 letters at the end of July. 130 of those letters were for accounts outside the city limits, all of which were wastewater customers. 45 were inside the city limits, 34 of those being stormwater and 11 being fire line. Total balance of these 175 accounts is almost $130,000. 123 of those accounts, or 70%, have previously been included on a similar lien ordinance. Staff attempted to make personal contact with the other 52 customers who are receiving this past due lien assessment notice for the first time. I'm sure somebody is thinking it, so just wanted to let everybody know none of these are for, none of these are accounts that have readiness to serve only charges on them. So as a comparison, last year, we sent out 209 letters with an outstanding balance of $124,500-ish. Of these letters that we've sent out so far, we have, we have 130 accounts remaining owing about $108,000. So that's how much it's been reduced so far. The utilities have a few different collection methods available, but the lien assessment's by far the most effective. However, a lien can only be used when the utility account holder is also the property owner of record with the county. Some important dates here. The customers identified in this document are delinquent by at least 90 days in the payment of services provided by the city. State laws permits the city to institute a lien on the property of these customers in order to recover payment for services rendered. This ordinance is passed every September so that we can provide the final list to the county clerk prior to their October 1st deadline, giving the county sufficient time to add the delinquent utility fees to their tax statement. We will provide an updated ordinance next Tuesday, reflective of all payments received to date at that point. And even though we are asking you to pass this ordinance next week, we will take into account all payments made up until noon on Monday, September 30th, before sending that final list to the county. And that's what I have, so available for questions.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Is this the nice little list that comes out with everybody's names and what they owe and everything, Nicole?
Of the delinquent amounts, yeah. There is an ordinance, a preliminary ordinance attached to the item right now. That's what will be updated next week before you vote on it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Nicole? Councilwoman Hiller.
Despite the numbers of outside the city, I seem to have quite a few in District 1. And are they likely, if they're multifamily properties, is that likely fire lines then? Because they all have, they have water on.
Let's see, I was going to say, I would, honestly, they are probably stormwater charges as opposed to fire lines. Like I said, only 11 of them were fire lines. The other 34, I think I said, were stormwater.
So doesn't, stormwater doesn't get included in their water bills?
It does, but it could potentially be a parcel that's only a parking lot or something like that, that doesn't have a water or sanitary charge associated with it.
That somehow then isn't connected with the bill?
In some cases, it's not. We do take the opportunity. This is, this ordinance is making sure we encompass everything. Before we make final lien, we will verify if they have an associated domestic service, which includes water, wastewater. But we don't do that till the very end in case there's issues. That way, we have the authority to assess it if necessary.
Well, I don't always get to it, but I try and reach out when it's in my district. So the thing to do would be to alert them, but also tell them they can get with you and get it put on their water bill so it doesn't happen again.
So stormwater actually has to be assessed by parcel. So we run into issues with that. I'm not saying we can't get it on the water bill, but that's probably why it's separate right now. But yes, they can always reach out to us at the call center and we can transfer it for them, potentially get the costs associated together as well.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
What's that number, Nicole? Because I see somebody on there, so I can have them call you.
All right, the call center number is 785-368-3111.
And then also, you said that there's, what were, in your presentation, you said there was something we can't.
We cannot assess to non-property owners? Is that what you were saying?
No, I thought you said we couldn't charge somebody.
We can't, the rural water district can't shut off water service for bills owed to the city?
Why?
Because we're separate entities.
But we, but we charge them for the water, right?
No. So we have wholesale rural water customers and we sell the water to them. They sell the water to the individual. We do not bill the individual out there for water service.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand this list. I've been educated more and more about it every year. I get that the majority of these people are chronic problems who literally will wait until we do this and then they pay their bill in full. Having said that, I've made the following amendment, motion every year. I think I've succeeded one year, but I don't want to break the streak. Why stop it? I would like to make move that we exclude from this list residential, non-commercial property owners who owe less than $200 who reside within the city limits. And the reason I do that is it's very hard for me to justify putting a lien on someone's property for less than $200. That's just me, I get it, right? But that is my magic threshold I have created in terms of liens. If I go through the list, that's like seven properties. It might be six because I need to check if one's actually in the city limits or part of one of the water districts. So that's it. That's my motion. Like I said, I make it every year and I will just offer it up one more time and see where it goes. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I could definitely support that when it comes down. Thank you. That amendment.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
I don't know if I can support that because one year, me and Karen called a whole bunch of people and they didn't even know they were on this list. And once they found out, they paid it.
And I understand that. That's why I say I offer every year. I think I've got it done one year and other years. But, but the flip side is if they owe less than 200 and we call them and then they still will pay it if they're on the list. Like I said, I did account. I think it's like seven properties. So for whatever it's worth, it's not dozens.
But there's one guy that's on here every year.
I understand. You, it's okay to vote me down.
I'm voting you down. I'm going to vote you down after I get you.
Councilman Banks.
I'd love to know how the lien process works. How does that work?
So we present the, the list of these properties that, that owe delinquent fees to the City of Topeka. We provide that over to the county after it's approved by you here on the city council. The county then adds that as a lien on their property and it shows up on their property tax bill when they receive that in November.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kell.
Kind of bouncing a little bit off of Councilman Duncan, how, is there an approximate cost to place a lien on someone's property?
There is staff time associated with it, but there is not a fee.
I just want to make sure that we're not spending $500 to a lien, you know, kind of as what the councilman was bringing up, you know, spending more than we're.
Right. No cost to the city other than your guys' precious time.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hiller.
I need to apologize because I don't remember that annual motion. But, you know, if, if the, if the step-by-step is that if that, if any of those seven individuals don't pay, it pops onto their tax bill and they get it in November and pay it then with one payment. At the county, that's easier perhaps than not paying at all or having us have to send it to collections or something like that where it would be added.
So I'm, I'm not sure, I, I get trying to protect folks, but I'm not sure it really would. If, if it would just bounce to their tax bill and then they get to pay it in November.
Yeah, well, they're still paying it. Like I said, I just.
Right.
Liens are not certainly high in the things that are negatives per se. But I've just, that's my number and.
Or better than going to collections.
Just my threshold, you know? There's no science behind it at all.
Further comment? Questions? Okay. Just discussion only. Move on to non-action item B.
This is a non-dist, yes, it's non-action, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I figured. You were giving us advance warning. She just said I'd support it. Okay, we'll move on to non-action item B. Madam Clerk.
B is discussion concerning the 2024 Standard Traffic Ordinance and local amendments amending Topeka Municipal Code Sections 1015, 010, and 020.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This item is the Standard Traffic Ordinance. This is a publication that is published by the League of Municipalities every year. And it occurs following the legislative session. So it codifies whatever changes they made at the state level into our local code so that we make sure our officers are ticketing people under the right state law provisions. So it's important that we stay current. We don't want to get behind in that. So this is the 51st edition of the League of Municipalities' annual traffic ordinances. There were really rather minor changes, not minor, they're important in their own way, but they're not significantly large amounts this year. So the first one, they're all described in your memo, but Section 23 of the STO was changed. Apparently, there was a loophole. And if you did exactly $1,000 worth of damage, then that was not a crime. So now we have clarity that it's above $1,000 and under $1,000, equal to $1,000. So it also did other important things, but they cleaned that up. And the other important things are felonies and not something we deal with in municipal court. The next section fixed a typo in the STO from when the league put it together. And then finally, there were some changes that were rather important and significant on how we deal with traffic citations. It allows us to better utilize payment plans and help keep people current on their driver's license for those that are showing up to municipal court and making their payment plans. It allows them to have restricted driver's licenses. And it changes significantly how they pay at the state level, but it allows us to utilize what we're already doing more effectively. So those are the changes that were, occurred as part of the STO. There was one final change in Section 85 of the STO that Councilwoman Hiller had requested earlier this year. Not sure if she remembers that or not, but we did. And we carried it over and made that change as part of the STO. But we had a local amendment that did not replicate state law for stopping, standing, or parking in prohibited spaces. So we are suggesting that we repeal our current local amendment and replicate state law so that it matches the statute. It's easier to understand and it does not make significant changes, but it just makes it easier for everyone. And that is your STO this year.
Questions for City Attorney? Councilman Duncan.
I believe the hard copies are now $10 per book. It says $9. There's just a small note, you know, inflation, right? We all got to raise prices. They were there at the league. They got to pay me.
I feel like I want to protest.
It's more even. It's even that.
Are there real questions for the City Attorney? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to non-action item C. Madam Clerk.
C is discussion concerning the adoption of the 2024 Uniform Public Offense Code and local amendments amending Topeka Municipal Code Section 905080.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the governing body. Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, will take us through this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Similar to the standard traffic ordinance, this is the Uniform Public Offense Code. It's also published by the League of Municipalities annually. It codifies any criminal law changes that we deal with in municipal court. So as a quick refresher, municipal court, we do all types of misdemeanors. So anything that's a misdemeanor or a traffic citation, we have jurisdiction over in municipal court. So we like to make sure that we are up to date on all of our misdemeanors under state law. There are two significant changes this year. The first we actually made as a city last year because of a court case that had come out dealing with constitutionality of disorderly conduct. We had preemptively fixed that in advance of it going to the Supreme Court. But the league has caught up and is, made that change as well to disorderly conduct to eliminate the criminalization of noisy conduct as unconstitutionally vague. So that portion was removed. And then the second one is the Good Samaritan Law was put into place this year. So it basically provides that a law enforcement officer will not take an individual into custody for certain violations of drug laws if they called to get help for someone. So if someone is ordained and they called to get help, they will not be taken into custody. It also provides some immunity in case you accidentally don't take someone into custody or do take someone into custody. But the Uniform Traffic Offense, or sorry, Uniform Public Offense Code takes those changes into effect. And those are the only two changes this year to our Uniform Public Offense Code.
Okay, thank you. Questions for City Attorney? Councilman Duncan.
It's actually an offshoot of that change in the law. And there may be, well, we have police and fire here. Maybe they can answer. But I guess, obviously, we've worked hard to get our police officers to have like Narcan as part of vehicles. Have we also done that with any other departments that have interaction with the public? Whether, I mean, fire, the EMS folks may, but just on trucks in general? And same with even some of our public workspeople who might come into contact with other people who are, or even code compliance who knock on doors and might run into that? Do they carry that? Because even contact, I, I don't know if we've even looked at that or thought about that. So I don't, I know that's kind of random, but it's associated with that change in the law. And I, and I view it more as the issue of, obviously, helping people is great if they need it. But since it can be a contact issue with employees, if we're carrying it in just a lot of vehicles now for their own personal safety.
So, thank you, Councilmen. Police and fire personnel do have that available. I don't believe that we have it with our other departments. I'm assuming that there's probably some level of training that we probably have to undertake for.
They sell it on Amazon.
No, I get it. And so, but it's definitely something we can consider. But as of right now, just our police and fire personnel have that available.
Okay, thanks, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilman Kell.
Kind of piggyback on Councilman Duncan there. One, the training's super simple. I've had to do it. Two, do we have it like in our, like our public office spaces right here? Where the people, like you said, it can be a contact issue. So we have people coming into our offices. And it's, like I said, training's super easy. So even if we have to do, do have to train them for liability reasons, I think it's something that we should look into also about having it because it could be a contact issue for the employee or it could just be someone coming in and having an episode after they've showed up, so.
Well, we'll definitely look into that, sir.
It's a good observation, probably maybe the courtroom as well, too. So that way, during any kind of procedures, that shouldn't happen. But you usually have an officer there, don't you?
It's one of those sad realities of where we are these days.
Yep. Okay. Any further questions? All right. We'll move on to public comment. And Mr. McClure, waited us out. You're still here.
I'm going to lay down. That's going to be my theme. Henry McClure, thank you. I hope, I hope you have some compassion for this. I understand that I've been involved with what was originally Arlen's Shopping Center that Mace Segal and Dana K. Anderson put together in the '60s. You know, at the time, Dana K. had to get the traffic light from KDOT because that was a highway. We, we've been through bankruptcies of Gordmans and then the people that bought Gordmans. We've, we've lost, we lost Bennigan's Steak and Ale. Gordmans. We've lost Bennigan's Steak and Ale, The Wild Horse, due to the deterioration of White Lakes. And so we've suffered a lot financially, fortunately, over the time. Now, I sold that shopping center when I moved back to Topeka in 2001 to Blake and Sterling Scott of 911 Walnut. We were fortunate enough to have Mainline Printing come forward, buy the Gordmans building five acres, and we were able to, with that deal, we were able to buy the ground lease out that Mace and Dana did back in the '60s. That led us to be able to do the Chick-fil-A and Whataburger deal. At some point in time, this is not a chronological conversation, but you passed the TIF district and we came forward with and put together a TIF and CID for Chick-fil-A and Whataburger. And through that deal, we have a signed development agreement. The economics of that deal were made 16, 17 months ago. So the sale price and the development agreement, you know, we had to give some of the CID money to Chick-fil-A and Whataburger as inducement. As time has marched on, your consultant, Benish, has put undue burden on this project. So we had a deal here. We got Benish today. And we need your help to honor the original deal. I mean, Sterling has said he'll pony up some more money, but it shouldn't, all the burden shouldn't be on Sterling and Blake today. There is, think about, Chick-fil-A is gonna have 85 employees. They're gonna have property tax, and the average Chick-fil-A does $8 million in sales. And I'm telling you, I did a mall in Chattanooga, Tennessee. When we put Chick-fil-A on the lease plan, it changed the whole world. Now, I live down here by Amtrak. I live in the middle of the hood. And I want to be able to go to the Boulevard to the Chick-fil-A and not have to go fight all that traffic. The only complaints I've heard over the years about the roads being bad out there, there aren't enough cars on them, but where's the Monte Cristo? And so I would hate to think that you wouldn't honor our original deal and extort, let Benish extort money, too much development money. Because I think, I think the public would like to see more Chick-fil-A's and Whataburgers come to our communities and Brahms and other smaller deals. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. No other persons are signed up to speak in public comment. And I did offer through Councilman Kell and asked Mr. McIntosh if he wanted to come in and speak during a public comment, but he passed. He said he was fine. So that is, the offer was made. Okay, so we'll move on to announcements. Madam Kirk.
For the September 17th agenda, we will have four board appointments. We will have a presentation from Community Resources Council, routine items on the consent agenda for the minutes and applications. Action items include a resolution for the Presbyterian Manor's healthcare facility revenue bonds, a resolution for the neighborhood revitalization plan renewal, and then we have an ordinance for the Standard Traffic Ordinance, 51st edition, and then the ordinance for the Uniform Public Offense Code, 40th edition, an ordinance for the utility bill, real estate liens, a resolution for the 2024 Shawnee County Tax Foreclosure Sale for Purchase Authority, and then the appropriation ordinance for the 2025 operating budget. Non-action items include the discussion on bi-annual contractor licensing.
Thank you. City Manager.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Ask the governing body members, and we'll start with Councilman Kell.
I just want to say I love this city. I want to make it great. I know there's people that sit there and say this is a dead city or a dying city. I wouldn't be here if I didn't want to make this a better city. And I know a lot of the people on the council feel the same way. A lot of employees feel the same way. We're trying to do what we can to make this a better city, grow the city, make it more fun, make it where the youth want to stick around after college or come after college to hear. We hear your concerns. And, you know, sometimes I go home and I get my butt chewed by my wife about things at our meetings. And it's nice to have that interaction with her to be able to see a different side of things. It's not nice at that moment, but, you know, but it's also nice where I can bounce things off of her. Just like last night, kind of what I said, I kind of bounced off her a little bit, and she gave me what she felt. And I just, I want to say I appreciate her feedback. I appreciate the citizens' feedback. I appreciate our employees' feedback when it comes to what we're trying to do here. Because this is not what we want. This is what we feel is best for the city, and we take everyone's input and try to make the best decision based off that. And like I said, I love Topeka. I've been here 18 years, pretty much the same house for 17 years, and I have no plans of going anywhere, and all I want to do is make it better, whether I'm sitting in the seat or not. So just know that myself and my colleagues here, a lot of us feel that way, and that's the way, when it comes to something like tonight, it makes it hard. So thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler? Glad to see you.
Yeah, good to be seen, Mayor. I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I will say, I can't let, he left, but it's interesting to have someone get up here during one speech and tell us, let the free market be the free market, keep your hands off of it, and get out of our way, and then come back up and say, hey, I got a store that does $8 million in sales every year, and by the way, another joint that did $3 billion in sales last year, but please give me $1 million of taxpayer money, while we've just spent all the time talking about not wasting taxpayer money. So, you know, pick a lane. That's all I ask, and then that helps us have a conversation. I will be on KSNT in the morning at bright and early in that 6:30-ish slot, so if you want to tune in, or I'll put it online later. Also, on Sunday, I have office hours from 3:00 to 4:30 at Farallon Plaza. My last one's just a personal note. My grandfather died last week. Today was his funeral. Obviously, on a personal level, he was a tremendous grandfather. He was one of three that I had. I didn't get to meet one who died before I was born. Second one was in and out. We had a good relationship, but it was much different. He was truly, even though he was my step-grandfather for over 45 years, so the step was really never a piece of that, he was truly my true grandfather. So on a personal level, obviously, he gave me a lot in that capacity. I will also say on a professional level, he spent 17 years as the executive director, a part of his company is, he actually spent 20 years as head of communications for what was KP&L and then became Westar and Evergy. He left there and opened up a company and for 17 years, did some lobbying and association management, including serving as the Kansas Pest Control Association Executive Director, their longest tenured for over 17 years. And when he left that, he said, you don't have to hire this kid, but if you want to take a chance on him, you know, he's doing some of this work. And they did hire me, so I actually succeeded him in that role for almost 13 years. And that was professionally a big movement for me, both in my lobby and association management work that I did when I started my company. So he gave me that little bump in the world, and I'll always be very grateful for that. So thank you to my grandfather. He will be greatly missed. A lot of people know him, Hal Hudson, and it was a life well lived. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer, are you still online?
I'm still here, but having some issues with my internet, so no comment or no announcements tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you. Not much. Just dealing with some hard issues. I'm just really proud to be part of this council. Appreciate what everybody's doing on the issues and the public as well as the staff. That's all. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Valdiviakara.
Thank you. I have nothing.
Okay. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Saturday, East Topeka North and East Topeka South will be having Fight the Blights. Drag your unwanted items to the curb. No kids, no tires, no hazardous waste. Everything else can go. Am I right, Monique? Am I right?
Except for limbs.
Oh, no limbs. I wanted to announce that at the CAC meeting, Monique announced on our Fight the Blights that it's 15.1 million. Am I correct?
15.1 tons.
15.1 tons of trash this far has been picked up. Oh, wow. In this city. And that really warms my heart because we get a lot of people that dump in East Topeka and Oakland and, you know, anything east of the Boulevard. And so to hear that, God, that would be a lot, 15.1 million. Anyway, so that really warms my heart. But it just goes to show that community engagement is hearing my call when I say, let's get this trash picked up and out of here. So if you see me limping next week, it's because I'm trying to get all my junk out to the curb.
Don't grab any poison ivy.
I won't drag the poison ivy, but the kid, the kid is real close. Let's just say that. So anyway, again, I want to thank community engagement and everybody that's been a part of this. And again, don't forget, have it out by 7 o'clock. 7 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My condolences to Spencer and his family from my family. If there's anything that we can do to make you feel better, maybe we can go out for a glass of milk or something. Most people know I'm not much for talking. I'm a good listener. Last night, I had some of our staff in the city manager's office show up at our NIA meeting last night, and it left me with a lot of joy to see the connection that they had with that group. I want to mention them, certainly our city manager, Monique Braxton, Rhiannon, and Carrie all showed up, and it was really a good spirited meeting. City manager was held over a little bit afterward by one of our constituents, but I think that overall, it was really a great process. And I would like to just say thank you to them. We know Braxton's not fuzzy and loving, but Braxton interacted very well with our constituents. And I'd just like to say thank you to him because a lot of things that we covered that they were concerned about, he covered those issues, and it made it less consuming for me to have to deal with some of them because they were pretty wound up when they got there, but then when they left, they were in good spirits. And I just want to thank them for being there, just taking the interest in our community and especially our district. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to mention that today I had a real good meeting with both Councilman Banks and with the Fire Chief Phillips. And, you know, we're talking about the fire department and so forth. And then with Councilman Kell's acknowledgement about the significance of tomorrow, I think it's important for us to remind ourselves of all that happened to our country and remind ourselves of how significant it is to have trained professionals in our community to take care of us. And so my hats off to the fire service and all those who have served and continue to serve, and for those who have retired and given years to the city for that protection. And on behalf of Braxton, I can say, at least myself, city manager, and Rhiannon, know that Braxton can tell a good funny story when it comes to it about him and his mother going to Gates Barbecue. He had us laughing really hard. He's a real good storyteller. He really is. But beyond that, I think, again, I want to thank the body for this discussion and the meeting. And there is a need for two executive sessions, if the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving a worker's comp issue involving one or more employees as allowed under KSA 754319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the IRS K Holiday Building. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the governing body in its discussion. City manager Perez and anyone else he deems necessary.
Okay. We've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Kell, seconded by Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will recess immediately into executive session. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I forgot about you. Jeez, how could I do that? All those opposed? We'll go immediately into executive session. Okay. We've concluded the discussion in our first executive session, and no decision has been made. There is a need for a second executive session, if the city attorney will read.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss one or more matters in litigation or possible litigation deemed privileged under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the Cyrus K Holiday Building. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City Attorney Stanley and other staff the governing body finds useful.
Okay. We've heard the need for our second executive session. Is there a motion to go into session?
I make a motion.
Okay. Motion to go into session by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Kell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So noted. We are immediately into our second executive session. Thank you, Taylor. We've completed our discussions in the second executive session. No action has been taken. There being no further business come before this body, the meeting is adjourned.